Work session July twenty six, two thousand and twenty three. First up is Child Care Fund budget Jake.
Morning everyone. I'm joined with this is Keely Darso she is our financial clerk down in juvenile end of things. This year for child care fund, I think that you guys have anticipated or the requested budget. A copy of that was sent out, I think yesterday. This is the smallest increase that we've requested in quite some time. It's down nine thousand dollars from our request last year, which is, I think, pretty remarkable. Given the current state of juvenile affairs in the state of Michigan. I do have an article that I want to pass out to you guys. Anticipation of. Going forward, article was put out by the Free Press and it really just goes to show the current state of juvenile justice in the state of Michigan right now. The lack of residential placements that we have. And issues that fall because of that. Right now, last year when I was here, and I know that there were three of you that weren't here last year when I presented. We kind of talked about how. Juvenile justice was a little bit of an inflection point and a little bit of crisis residentially. At the time, I was hoping that maybe we would be rounding the curve on that as far as placement shutting down. We haven't since the last presentation that I did last year. We've lost four additional residential treatment programs, which was including our own detention, which was not accounted for in last year's child care fund request. The main increase that you'll see in the bottom third of the budget, if you're looking at it, and it's really mostly just re-allocution that we've done there. We re-allocated a lot more funds into juvenile probation officer travel. Obviously, that's a direct reflection of our detention center closing. For instance, in last year, juvenile probation officers traveled shy of ten thousand miles. It was about nine hundred, nine thousand, nine hundred and five miles. This year, we already have juvenile probation officer travel of nineteen thousand, six hundred and forty six miles, which is attributable to not only our detention center closing, but how far away they're traveling for placements. Instead of walking across the street to detention center, we have probation officers traveling to Escanaba, which also doesn't help a lot of our parents and our families relate to those youth in their in placements. We also had to allocate some more money to independent living, which is a situation we haven't faced a lot of in the past. We have this year, which is a situation where a juvenile. Reaches an age where adoption is no longer an appropriate goal, or they choose not to be adopted. And mom and or dad refuse to take the juvenile back into the care, their care. So we have to find some other placements for them. We currently have two individuals that are in independent living right now. I expect that to go up. We obviously are in a situation, just like I know that there was a few of you, I think, that attended the mental health symposium in March or February of this year. Juvenile justice is or juvenile mental health is far behind the adult mental health system even. And I know all the issues the state is struggling with the adult mental health system. And we are getting a lot of juveniles that are co-occurring mental health and behavioral health issues, which creates an issue, obviously, for us in choosing a right placement, appropriate placement. And then obviously paying on a fiscal avenue, paying for those mental health medications and things like that when they're in placement. That has seen a little bit of a rise, obviously, with the juvenile treatment programs closing. Simple supply and demand economics dictated that there was going to be a substantial per diem rise. That is something that we talked about last year and something I was really glad that. Mr. Anderson spoke about when he did the audit presentation. I think he did a very good job of portraying to you all what we're facing right now. Our lowest per diems are about three hundred and fifteen dollars per day. In several cases, we're paying in excess of four hundred dollars per day. So when we look at a residential placement, we're looking at ten to twelve thousand dollars a month per child. And these placements are usually nine to twelve months or longer. So when you see this number, the numbers in there, before you get sticker shock with any of those, it's just kind of a explanation of how much money it costs for these residential programs. Because of that. We are continue to be extremely judicious in our placements. Last year, from October to May, we had thirteen placements in residential treatment for a total of two hundred and thirty days. This year, from October to May, we had ten children place in residential police placement with a total of one hundred and three days. So that goes to show that we're being extra judicious with those youth that we're placing and making sure that they're appropriate to be placed. Also, it's showing that we probably should be placing more kids than we are, but we don't have replacements simply, which is a frustration on the community safety end as well. Let's see, what else do we have here? Keep in mind, all of this may change next year. I know that there are several juvenile justice related bills on the floor of the House right now. I don't necessarily know what, if anything, is going to pass there. I'm guessing there's going to be my favorite word of unfunded mandates that go along with some of those. But talking about them now, I think is pretty premature, but needless to say, this presentation might be drastically different next year than it is this year. But in short, with the detention center closing last year, us not budgeting for that or being able to. And having a slight request for an increase this year, but having it be substantially less than what we requested in the past. I think that what we are doing is an example of doing more with less that we have. I'm aggressively still onboarding community based services. When I started, this is no knock at my predecessor at all. I think she did a really good job on the position as well. We had one. I guess home based service in place. We now have four and I'm looking to onboarding more. So we're meeting the residential crisis head on with knowing that when we have more youth in the community, we need to have more services. But that still doesn't exacerbate all the issues that we have. And like I said, I think that newspaper article did a really good job of outlining that. So I encourage all of you to take a look at that. If you have any questions, I'll take those. And also, if any of you are interested in what we do on a day to day basis, my door is always open. Or room is open, you can come check out what we do and see how the services are working, anything like that. We're more than welcome to that. I guess at this point in time, anybody have any questions?
Any question? Alright. Thank you. United Way, number two.
Morning, my name is Sherry Benchley. I am the executive director for Roscommon County United Way. Everybody take a deep breath at the table. We're not here to ask for money. But like all your wallets, we're here to share some good news with you and some not so good news and. Ask for a change in our grant. Last year is a very exciting year for United Way and Roscommon County. With the money that we got from ARPA, the money we got from Consumers Energy. Last year or this last month, when I turned into my report, my audit report to United Way Worldwide, I went, oh, my gosh. And did it again, eight hundred and eighty-two thousand, nine hundred, nine hundred and ninety-three dollars that we took. That's a lot of money for a little community like that. It all started with the ARPA money from you, which we do utility assistance, foreclosure assistance and nonprofit assistance. When we started working on the utility assistance with Consumers Energy. We can go into their portal and put holds and so forth. This is part of the program. In September, they called us. And I will never forget this phone call because Audrey said, how are you? And I said, good. And she said, are you smiling? And I said, well, yeah, I guess I like to smile. She's, would you like to smile some more? And I said, yes, I would. And she said, well, we have two hundred thousand dollars to add to your utility program. Are helping Alice. I, I was flabbergasted, speechless was the word. I said, you're kidding. And of course, just started to shake. So they've been working with us shortly after that in September. My partner in crime here, we wrote a grant thinking, I was thinking we'll never get it. Tom said, we've got this if we're going to win it. And I kept saying, we can redo it. I've already talked to him if we don't get it. In October, we won a grant for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars from Consumers Energy, the people award. We're one of two organizations in the state who win that grant and the smallest organization to ever win it. We took that two hundred and fifty thousand dollars and had a food kitchen, food truck. And I think probably it's been out long enough now. Most of you have seen it around in the community. Yes, and it was in the parade. We rolled it out in January at the Tip Uptown Parade and it was wonderful. And we actually started serving meals the end of February. My partner here, Tom, is the chef and runs it. And I'm going to let him talk about need and what we're seeing in her food in Roscommon County.
Good morning. We all know the pandemic is over. However, we are still feeling the effects. At or partly stemming from the COVID nineteen pandemic. As we were coming out of the pandemic, we had increased costs related to the supply and demand curve. Increased costs followed by unfathomable inflation. We all know what the cost of a dozen eggs went from. And it was inflation that affected everything. Basic needs, people, people may put off buying a house. They may put off buying a new car. They can't put off. Basic needs, the need for food. For example. We work closely with the food pantries within the county. Chris Ashcraft with Roscommon County Food Pantry. His statistics are astronomical. From twenty twenty-one until this year, they have doubled, if not tripled, the number of households served each month. Which is great and they do an awesome job. But what also has increased. Is the unmet need. The food pantries offer households. A three day supply of food, roughly a three day supply of food. Once a month. What about the other days? With everything else increasing, people are robbing Peter to pay Paul. And. They are in a cyclic pattern and eventually. You can't make ends meet. Sherry spoke of the dish of the day. Since we have been in operation. About five months now, we have served seven hundred and forty-seven unduplicated households. Over eight thousand meals. We are happy and concerned to tell you that close to sixty percent of those households have at least one senior citizen living in them. Twenty-one percent have school aged children. And close to twenty percent. Have a military veteran living in their households. Food insecurity is a need. That. Even though we are attempting to make. Strives in addressing. But food insecurity is still seeing a lot of unmet needs.
We have, you gave us last year a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars to help nonprofits that were affected by the. COVID. We helped a couple that, two or three that actually had to close down. Boy Scouts lost their charter. We've got a charter now, they're back up and running. Girl Scouts, they're back up and running. Foster Closet are back up and running with Threads, the Marquee Church and so forth. We have approximately twenty-eight thousand left in that fund. And we're here today to ask you if we could use twenty-five thousand dollars of that to help the food pantries in the community because we really feel that that's where the need is. It would, it's no difference in what we were doing before. They're just showing the food pantries, like he said. COVID, what COVID's done to them and this inflation has done is just make the need go higher and higher and higher. I'm the voice on the end of the phone for helping Alice with the utilities and the foreclosure. And I hear all the time, everything is so expensive. This is the first time I've ever had to ask for help with my utility bill. Or, you know, this is the first time we've ever been in this type of situation. A lot of it is seniors, a lot of it is young families. The cost of utilities keep going up and up and up and so forth. So we would like to help the food pantries here in the community and allocate that twenty-five thousand dollars to them. That's a little bit different than what was on our, on our original grant. But we think it's a need here. No, I've been following it all winter long, talking to Chris, listening to John Sutter over at St. Helen. The people here in Roscommon that do their once a month truck, you know, hearing what they're doing. And they're all telling me more and more and more. And one of the issues is we're not getting the USDA food that we were getting at lower cost from the food pantries too, which is making it much more expensive for them to run. So I would propose and ask that we be able to use that twenty-five thousand dollars to help the food pantry.
Please remember, this is not us asking for additional funds. We already have these funds. We just need your permission to change the scope of our original grant to allow additional funds to go to the food pantries.
Anybody have any questions?
I apologize, something that we have to check into. We can't just say yes or make a motion. We have to see if that follows our scope.
Well, COVID, what COVID did for them was to just triple the number of people that they're, that they're, that they're helping and so forth. And we just felt that this is where the need was and that we should bring it to your attention and use that money where the need, the need is most.
I have a question.
Yes.
Chair, maybe our controller would know. What, what would we have to do to change that funding process so they could use that twenty-five thousand dollars? They said we'd have to check into it. What do, what do we have to do to check?
It's really simple. You just have to ask me if that was an allowable expense and then the Board of Commissioners, which it is because we donated to them as well, granted to them. The Board of Commissioners will just need to pass a motion authorizing them to utilize twenty-five thousand dollars for a new United Way donation program for the food pantry.
Is that something we can get into our next meeting then?
That's up to you guys.
Yeah, we could do it in two weeks.
Yeah, I mean, that's a better answer than just send them to check into it.
Yeah.
I've been waiting here for a grant for three months.
Yeah.
Very admirable that you're willing to do this. I think it's, is very admirable and also too, Mr. Chair, Mr. Ashcraft is here. It might be wise for us to ask for his, his thoughts. Be so inclined if you give him a claim. Comments?
Anything to add?
Chris Ashcraft, Executive Director of Roscommon County Food Pantry. Today I came here for, but what Sherry and Tom has said is true. We are. Have been top three of all the counties in the state of Michigan as far as food insecurity and. Income based families. That's probably never going to change because we're very rural. Our biggest problem. Is our supplier for food bank in Eastern Michigan. They handle twenty-two counties, sixty-seven pantries. Their numbers have tripped. They bought everybody else. Their numbers have gone up too. In confidence, six months ago, they told me sixty-five percent of the food that was allocated to USDA. Used to have seventy-five items on their menu USDA. Basis of the USDA prices is a can of soup would cost me four cents. Now today it costs me a dollar and four cents. Doesn't sound like a lot. Put it to four hundred and fifty plus families a month. A lot of money. Right now, I think there's five items on their menu that USDA prices. Addly, those five items I don't. All that's I. So. Big problem is pandemic is still there for some manufacturers. It's still there for some agencies. Even though people think COVID is gone and all that's gone, really not gone. To the manufacturer side of it. Risk frame that it ends soon. Twice.
Since you're on the inside, why do you see so much inefficiency and the breakdown? I mean, sixty-five percent, that's quite a, you know, that's quite a big number.
Eric, good question. Nineteen ninety-five, I've got a business management degree. Like I know a little bit about this. It does happen. Most manufacturers will have what's called. Inventory backlog in case of emergency food. All that in case of emergency food kind of disappeared during pandemic because they couldn't make anything. They were dipping into their reserves. The point where it was gone. Now, right now, I believe all they're trying to do is maintain and replenish their reserves. How long is that going to take? Unfortunately, you see for a lot of people, they got so used not to working. Some people don't want to go back to work or they don't want to go back to work for the ways that they made. Which, because of inflation, wages are relevant to them now. It's the manufacturing businesses of the world, they have to replenish their stock before they. The reserve has to be where they go. How long is that going to take? I don't know.
I guess I'm a little confused. That sixty-five percent number, the inefficiency, does that mean it just goes to waste? Does that, that's what, that was what I was, that's what I pictured that is that it went to waste.
The product has never been delivered to their bottom. They never got that product.
Okay, so that makes more sense, okay.
Their warehouse is empty. Product would be on their menu, on their menu hourly. Products last in a supply truck every two weeks. Products used to last on their menu three, four months. Two, two weeks cycle in one month. That item that I was ordering. Over six months. We're talking green beans, corn, can't get canned fruit right now, less than dollars sixty-nine. Which is the same price I can buy at a table lot, which is just right now.
How long do you think this is going to go on and how long do you think it'll, I mean?
I can't answer that. It's. It's got to change. I don't think, I don't know if it's the manufacturers who are struggling.
They're not giving you any kind of information from the, from the supply side then?
Okay, the only information I can give is from my supplier. They've been very honest with me. They don't go around talking about the allocated food that they have. My number's gone up, everyone's number's gone up. I can see why they're struggling. I don't know if it's a government problem, if it's a policy problem, I don't know. I know manufacturers are doing everything. Front of business, you own your business. Building, producing your product is how you.
Well, when people stop, I mean, I would, I would say people stopped working, so they stopped producing. So it takes a long time probably for that back backlog to get filled in. So it's, it's not that they don't have it, just not being produced at the rate that it needs to be produced to.
So our supplier is hardly feeding America, feeding America's nation coast to coast. But it's not like taking food from me or getting food from me. They're getting food for every pantry in the state, maybe even outside of the United States. So manufacturers, they're. Want to replenish their stock. Oh, right.
It's happening. If you ever have a chance to go to the food bank in Flint. It started when I first went down, it started with a building about the size of this building right here. It tripled that about ten years ago. And like, and, and they do it, but a lot of their stock comes from donations. Kellogg, General Meals, you know, all of these even Sprite, some of the, they're, they're donating things. And if they don't have these extra things to donate, then we're, we're, we're suffering here at this. We work closely with the food pantries here. Our budgets are all separate and we give money. We just gave out allocations and unfortunately, our campaign was down by twenty percent. So our allocations were down, but we were able to give a couple of the pantries each five thousand dollars. You know, that's not a lot. It'll help for us maybe, but this is why when we have this money that's in this pocket of the grant that we wanted to put it where we could.
I have one last question too. Who's writing your grants? You're getting these grants. We need, we need some good grant writers. We wrote the grants. You did.
We'll see.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Vance, recording system purchases.
Good morning. So you should have a sheet, looks like this on one side and the other side's a motion for the next meeting. So we started a project back in twenty nineteen, entered into a Motorola solutions that is ultimately transitioned into replacing our radio console system in dispatch. And part of that is we need a IP based logging system is the official name for. Basically, the radio system today is internet based and it does include some radios. This piece of equipment is necessary for us to record, for example, the fire pager recording when they go out to the fire department and the number of other channels that we need to record that we can't currently. So I'm working with, I got a quote from Motorola and received a quote from Equiture. That's this quote here and Equiture is the company we work with currently. And they came in, let's see, on the device itself about three thousand dollars less and then five thousand dollars less a year. That would be Equiture came in less than Motorola. So I am looking to get a motion on the next weeks from now or to be authorized to purchase this piece of equipment, present that on the backside of that.
The Authority Board did approve this.
The Night on Authority Board did approve it at our last meeting.
Yep, to move forward. Any questions for Vance?
I do have a comparative sheet if you want. I could bring that in, but it was also presented by Equiture. Sorry.
Thank you Vance. Rebecca, Treasury Report.
You hadn't found you.
You haven't found you. Two things. First one that we're going through will be the quarterly report. Like this. Oh, I gave it to Julie. Let me go find them. Okay.
Are they buried in this stuff?
No.
Okay. I should ask Darlene to begin.
All right, well, how about this one? Okay. Well, how about we? Yes, apparently. Well, then I'll just start on this one because, um, the other one, wait till she comes back. But, um, what you will be receiving is the settlement report with the townships. And it looks like this. And these are the delinquent amounts that I have to pay by law to the townships to make their taxes whole. This year, it was, uh, $3,753,196.94. That's the highest it's ever. And so I just want you guys to be aware of how much money goes out. And so that when you look at the tax payment fund, you don't look at that and say, oh, we have all this money here. Well, we don't because we have to end up paying that out. It takes quite a while to get that money back and it just revolves, and that's why it's called the revolving fund.
How much higher? How much higher is this year versus normal years? Just the ballpark? Million, a half a million?
Oh, no, several hundred thousand.
Several hundred thousand, okay. And, and, and these are taxes that will eventually be recaptured.
Correct.
By people either paying them in or tax foreclosure. Okay.
Speaking of tax foreclosure, I do want to thank United Way. Um, we use it quite often. Uh, we send hi. We, um, when we have people come into our office and they're struggling, we have, uh, paperwork right there to give them for helping Alice, United Way, St. Vincent de Paul, um, DHS, um, they will all help in foreclosure. And, um, so anytime that we hear of these programs, we have the paperwork right there. We'll even help our residents fill it out because a lot of them have a hard time with that. Fill it out so that they don't have to lose their home. This year, I foreclosed on only 24 homes, which isn't a lot. It was, I was very happy. Now, we had a lot of payment agreements, which is an extension of one year. And they have to pay the higher interest rate, but they're not foreclosed. And they have a monthly payment that they have to make. And, um, so only 24 this year, so that's good. So what ones did you get? Did you get this one? Okay. There you go. Okay, now you can look at it. So at the top, you'll see the summer. And those are, you can see the townships are at the top. And then, um, broke down on the side, set, set interest, county op, county op interest in the total. And then we have the village, because the village only collects general allocation, water and delinquent water. And then, uh, the next column down is the winter, and it has all the buckets for the winter. And then again, at the top in the yellow, it's the townships, and that's how much each township had delinquent. And then if you look on the bottom left, you have the townships, summer, the winter and the grand total. Any questions?
On your foreclosure, you said there's 24. What is it in a typical year?
Ooh. Um, 40 to 50.
So this year's a lot, this year's a lot less, okay. Well, that's good.
Yes, it is. A lot of help is happening, like I said, with United Way, helping Alice. So there's a lot of programs out there that you're able to help people. Okay, next one is this one. This is the general ledger, this is the balancing, the quarterly report. And then behind this one, you'll see right out of the general ledger, investment and also the cash report. And you'll see that the two match. Uh, also you'll see that, um, the interest has increased. Starting, uh, in April, it was $59,000 and in June, $73,000. This is mostly due to the market and, uh, MBIA, our Michigan Class Fund. That's where a lot of our interest is coming from. Uh, when the audit went through, um, we did, Jim did talk about the fact that, um, we're not spread out in a lot of banks. Well, main reason is we don't have a lot of banks around here. Uh, Chemical Bank closed, um, there were several in Houghton Lake. Uh, there are some banks, smaller banks, that I won't even deal with because when I look at how they invest their money and their debt to investments, and I'm not comfortable. So, a lot of times I'll stick with MBIA, which spreads it out to different investments. And, um.
Can we use credit unions?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Do we have any credit unions?
We have, um, I did have money in Northland Credit Union. And also, we have, we do have money right now in North Central. Okay, but they, the yield is so low, Eric. I mean.
What?
The yield.
Oh, interest rate, okay.
Is so low, where I'm getting 4% and 5%, they are giving 1.5% to 1. So.
No, I just, I just was wondering how, how you spread that out. And, and you're restricted probably on, on the types of, of lending institutions that you can.
Yes, if you look at my investment policy that you got in January, it shows the restrictions and it shows you where I will invest, what I won't invest in. And, um, I've been doing this for four, well, actually I've been treasurer for years. And there's a lot to look at, and I look at it daily. I look at the market, um, and move the money around to make sure that it's safe. That's the number one. Two is getting the most yield.
Have, have you ever invested in it with a lending institution that we ended up losing money on?
No, never.
That's good.
Let's hope it never happens. Okay, does anybody have any questions on that? You also, and maybe you don't know, I say you also know, but maybe you don't, that my department, um, handles the PRE denials. And that's the primary residence exemption denials. So this year, so far, we have denied, uh, 24. And out of those 24, four have appealed to the tax tribunal, Michigan Tax Tribunal. And one, we've gotten a decision back and we won. Three are still pending. And if we win those three, uh, we will bring in $30,189.13, which includes the school operating and the interest. Now, interest alone, in those 24 that we have, um, denied, the school received $37,986.15 in interest and the county $5,835.19. And that's because if we deny them, the law says 70% goes to the school, 20% of that interest goes to the county and 10 to the township. If the township denies, it's 70 to the schools, 20 to the township and 10 to us. Any questions on that?
Yeah, the principal resolution, uh, residence exclusion, that's the PRE, I'm assuming.
Yes.
In what cases do you, tell me why, why would they apply for it and not get it and/or apply for it and get it? Uh, do they have two residences or, yeah, is that, tell me how that.
Um, we get leads from the state, uh, as.
So they're trying to claim two.
Yes, two residents, yes. Um, pardon me? Um, we don't normally take neighbors, you know, um, we get.
Wouldn't know. They wouldn't know. How would a neighbor know?
Well, if somebody's not there and they check out their taxes because it's all public information.
Yeah. You're checking on other people.
Yeah.
Yes.
You're kidding me. Wow, really?
Really.
Yes. Um, so we get leads from the township, the state. Um, as a tax bill comes in, my staff will actually look at the return address on that envelope and look to see if they had their primary exemption. Okay, so we do a lot of investigating. Uh, we have the ability to pull, or should say ask for somebody's, um, tax records. And we can look at how they file their taxes, what address they use, registration of their cars. We can ask for bank statements. We can ask for utility bills. That, right there, well, is a telltale. If somebody's utility bill is 30-some dollars in the winter, you're not living there. And if it's 10 in the summer, they're not living there. So there's a lot we can look at. Loretta is a very good PRE specialist. She investigates and she digs, but she's very fair also. When people come in, she'll send out a questionnaire. When people come in, she will sit down and go through that questionnaire with them and ask more questions. And, um, she's always been very kind with people. So. I have a very, very good group of ladies that work for me.
Yes, you do.
Yes.
And if you haven't been down there, you need to stop and say hi and introduce yourself.
They get abused sometimes, but come back with kindness every time.
Yep.
That's what I really appreciate.
Rebecca, I should know this because I'm actually a licensed assessor, but what's the penalty if someone claims to place? There's gotta be some kind of a downside.
Well, they can do, they can get fined now if it's on purpose, yes. If they find out that you have claimed to and you knew exactly what you were doing, you can do jail time and also a fine. If it is, ooh, I thought that when I got my new home, that somebody would have taken that and switched it for me. That's a different story.
And that happens quite a bit with real estate companies.
And, and, and with older people also.
Yep.
And, um, they don't realize that if they don't go through a title company, because a lot of times a title company will do the rescension of your old one and then give you your new one. But if you don't go through a title company and you do the sale on your own, you may not know that.
Do you find that most of those are honest mistakes or do you find people are really trying to, uh, game the system? Or what is, I, I'm just asking out of curiosity.
You know, no. I don't think I, I want to answer that because that is, you're telling, you're asking me to say, hm, are you a liar or not? And I'm not that good of a judge. All I do is go on the facts.
I mean, but there's apparent, yeah, there, there's apparent times when, you know, they're trying to game the system and.
Yeah, and, and sometimes I can see that, um.
That's all I was wanting, I, I was just curious.
Yeah, yeah.
Because it would seem to me that it would probably be more honest mistakes and I'm, I'm kinda like on that side of people where.
And that's why.
I'd wanna think there was an honest mistake.
Right, and that's why I just judge on the facts. That's it. I look at the facts in front of me and say, you know, doesn't matter to me if you were trying to or not. It may to the state because then they'll come after you for that fine. But me, no.
Thank you.
How does, well, I got, I have another question. All this information that you now have, how does that affect our, the tax fund as far as what we're talking about with the lakes, uh, with our lake level situation that we're dealing with, with Houghton, Higgins and Lake St. Helen? Because we're gonna use money out of the tax fund to, to disinfect our, our tax fund at all?
In what attack?
Did, did, all this new information that you have, that you're giving us the money, did, did, have any of those numbers changed? I mean, do we still have?
This PRE money? No, that, that's just school. That's for the school.
Okay, but hasn't anything to do with that? I heard tax fund thrown in there somewhere, so I just wanted, I just wanted to double check if we're still on track.
Yes.
Okay, for that.
This is school money, school operating money. And whether it comes from the state or it comes from, um, the resident themselves, that's what this involves. But the tax fund, no.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions? My door is always open. Uh, if you have any questions, you know, that you think about later on, come on in and I'll answer them for you. Thank you.
Number five, Mark.
I'll be quick.
Person of the year.
About 10 years ago, the board passed a resolution for person of the year. We've had folks like, uh, Vicky Randall, Vicky Springstead, Bob Smith, Ronald Lambert, Dick Martin, Jo Jean Thompson, and, uh, Mickey Epper have all received that award. We asked every commissioner every year about this time, consider person of the year. My person of the year recommendation this year is going to be Chuck Harwin. I've known Chuck for a long time. A lot of people know he's, he's personally works at, the way he puts in a luminous amount of. What we do is everybody picks somebody that they feel that is, is worthy. If you don't have anybody, that's fine. If you do, that's fine. And what we do is we come together with a vote. It's always historic, and I wrote this motion up 10 years ago that wherever we decide, it's not a four to one or three to two, but it's unanimous decision. Is this supposed to be an award that, that we're, we're trying to honor somebody's service and make a contribution? So we, we recommend if you have somebody in their mind that you feel is worthy, we recommend you have to do the, you have to do the work, you have to write up a presentation, you need to give the reason why this person is man or woman. We, generally, there's somebody that lives physically, lives in the county. Pretty loose requirements, but again, what I would do is just give your comments and your recommendations to the board chairman. Do the, I'd say within the next month or so, we come up with, my person is Chuck Harwin. Get somebody, consider your nominee. Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any questions regarding that? Okay, how about, I have after 10. Thank you. I 26th Annual, I mean Regular Meeting, excuse me, uh, stand for the page.
When you lead the flag of the United States of America into the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Here, we're switching. Okay, roll call board members, please.
Russo?
Here.
Astor Green?
Here.
Wolfson?
Here.
Milburn?
Here.
Censor?
Here.
Provo of the agenda, please.
Phil, move this chair.
I'll second it. We just do that unfinished. Their call roll, discussion. Their call roll, please.
I'm sorry, uh, this is the approval of the agenda, right?
Yes.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure a couple of items were gonna be covered. The, uh, and it's probably under Old Business, but I just want to make sure. And that's the Spongy Moth, uh, situation, um, that I talked about last week.
That's gonna be on in two weeks, Eric.
Okay, but I have some, oh, I just want to talk about it today too, so that'll be fine. I just.
Okay.
Yeah, I understand. And, uh, uh, some of the, uh, letters and so forth regarding the Houghton Lake situation.
Okay.
So I just want to make sure we're able to talk about that when it's a big surprise. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Their call roll, please.
Astor Green?
Yes.
Wolfson? Milburn?
Yes.
Censor?
Yes.
Russo?
Yes. Okay, everybody has your, the minutes in front of them. Provo of the minutes for 7:12 of 23 regulars meeting. I'll make a motion. Discussion. Clerk call roll, please.
Wolfson? Milburn?
Yes.
Censor?
Yes.
Russo?
Yes.
Astor Green?
Yes.
Public comment. Five minutes. Jason, no, I mean Andy, nothing, okay? Number seven, Jody, Administrator Report.
Good morning. Um, legal update, Courage versus Ross County County Treasurer. That is the tax foreclosures, no change. Hill versus Ross County County, we did July 20th, had the appearance in circuit court. Most of it is geared around the state, and our plaintiff was granted, um, limited records from the state specific to the overprimes for the notch. Personally, I don't think that's a huge deal and I'll love to see what they come up with. I think all of us will because we've never seen that data before. Um, no update on the opiate suits. Special Assessment Projects, Higgins Lake, same thing. Hearing is set for September 15th. Lake St. Helen is set for December 15th. Houghton Lake, um, the amended contract and the apportionment for the SAD is going to be delayed. A very specific parcel of information that needs to be included for apportionment purposes. There was a meeting scheduled with the township assessors actually yesterday, but then a majority of them were not able to attend. So it has been pushed back to August 7th, and this is to determine. So it has been pushed back to August seventh, and this is to determine what they can provide versus what will need to be researched through spicers. Obviously, um the more that we can get through uh B S N A software programs that's already there, the less expensive this is for our residents. This is going to be information like footage size, parcel, some of the things that we know they're not going to have, such as number of hotel rooms on a property. So those are all all data that are going to be needed. Once we have this, um and G E I will be able to compile a new contract for design and apportionment and research gathering for the apportionment purposes to then be presented to the board of commissioners will begin. Lake levels, St. Helen is down one point five six inches, all the boards are in and flop dates are closed. Higgins is at five point oh five, which is three point eight four inches below, and all the gates are closed. Fulton Lake is right on the money, eight point one oh, and all the boards are closed. Legislative update, um I'm sure Sheriff has seen this as well. There is actually a federal bipartisan bill that was introduced in the U S House and the Senate that would address Medicaid for inmates in prison settings, and essentially that would allow for anyone who's Medicaid, if it passes, to have that available to them for critical health services. Um we currently are budgeted for about a hundred and nine thousand dollars for inmate healthcare. This can vary um depending on what type of illnesses they come up with, but obviously, once they're the counties, it's the county's responsibility to put the bill. So if I were arrested and I was in, you know, kidney failure, any dialysis that I had to have on a weekly basis would then become our response. Um ideally, if something like this would pass, it obviously doesn't doesn't cover Medicare, but it could make them applicable and able to utilize Medicaid as well. So this would be one of those things that if you've got a telephone number or an email for the House and Senate for the United States, reach out to them. Soil erosion audit I emailed you by the state of Michigan was completed. Um they found us not approvable, but the things that were not approvable on are pretty common occurrences with paperwork. Um and that was for Justin Bragg, who is representative for equals that we will receive a letter with the information and the instructions on the corrections needed. Um and I know that Chase, myself and Greta will make sure that those things are up and running. One of them is simply a form that um even our prior soil erosion person was not aware that we needed, so that's kind of one of those new things that came. I've been doing the collection and review of the quarterly um A R P grant reports. Um obviously, from United Way, I appreciate them always being willing to come and give us an update since they did receive a lion's share of of funding for their programs as well. I did meet with Brenda Backfelder in regards to economic um development. Their current funds um and their budget establishment are July twenty-sixth. Um and they currently have not started any type of fundraising or planning for a standalone Ross County County Economic Development Committee. Um they're not giving up, they are continuing to explore options. One of their setbacks is that they have several of the members who have been more proactive through the years are leaving the area, so they will need new business models. Um and hopefully people, you know, with with ability to go out and ask for money from other businesses to fund an economic development corporation. I did meet with Director Stringham, um he is in the process of searching through to internal candidates for deputy director position. We're just reviewing the um checkmarks that we're going to go through to make sure that that is a fair process for everyone. Our sheriff's office, if you haven't seen the flyers, the postings, the Facebooks, is actually utilizing state grant funds for sponsorship of candidate candidates um in the Kirtland Law Enforcement Academy Academy for Sheriff's Deputy. Obviously, you know, nationwide, there is a shortage of all public safety um via EMS deputies and corrections. Obviously, this uh this is pushing up some of the funding for programs. Um but additionally, one of the things that we're seeing is some pretty arc increases in wages for those positions. Um obviously, it's due to a lack of human resources, so I'm trying to entice people into those positions again. The Northern Michigan Commissioners Association meeting was held last Monday here. They had some really great information on the opiate funding that the counties are receiving. The general consensus for the counties that were there is that nobody's going to be utilizing any of the funding until it is fully received and, you know, it's in the pot. A general thought at this time is there are some pretty pretty specific rules um that will be finalized by that time through the state of Michigan that they have placed on what that funding can go towards. With the exception of those things that are covered um for the jail and sheriff department that we know that we want to reverse for. Probably the best bet at that time will be for you guys to appoint a committee similar to what they did for the American Rescue Plan Act funding to oversee oversee some applications of grants processes to go forward with that funding. Um definitely, you'll need specialists to understand a lot of the programs that they're calling best practices. Have to invest in best practices in Michigan, and then it'll be the same thing with the American Rescue Plan where there is funding that will come through um and have a track and reporting, et cetera. So it'll be interesting. Eagle has been developing the materials management planning. I got behind, Julie is off for the last week and a half, um so Noel and I have been splitting sharing duties for Julie. I wanted to have a little bit more, so I apologize to Commissioner Censor. They, we don't have a timeline on when the materials management planning program has to be done. The solid waste management plan that the counties have adopted stays in place until the new material adopted. Um I was able to find out that Eagle does not yet have a finalized uh implementation plan and process put together. So until they have that, um we're kind of hanging out on our own and we'll be doing a little learning. But we will need to in the solid waste management committee um to review those changes in the statutes and then update the plan accordingly. The the odd thing is I did verify two of those members are no longer with us and have to cease, so we'll end up needing to go for that at a minimum. Amy Hausman, Daniel Marhoff, um and myself have been compiling data regarding the spongy moth, formerly the gypsy moth program um per Commissioner Ostrigan's request. We originally planned to present it today, which is why Julie Crick had been here because she is our scientific expert, obviously, from S U. Additionally, Vanessa Varner, our emergency management director, and myself have been reviewing the grants, projects and fundings that our emergency management program has provided and shared to other local municipalities. You know, that was one of Commissioner Ostrigan's questions as well. Um I can give you one great example that on the spot Vanessa didn't really come up with it, but thinking about you're presenting a hazardous mitigation plan for approval. Um if the county does not have a hazardous mitigation plan approved and finalized to the state and then through the federal government, no entity within the county is eligible for. Oh, there's one thing that we do that helps them out tremendously. They use a lot of those FEMA grants for fire equipment. It's a big area in the EMS department, so there are more options like that, but Vanessa's been digging history for spare time. Thank you. Quick update on uh Ogama District Court and why you care about this. So Judge Bibby and Chief Judge Bennett have approved placement of our district court administrator in a chair role over the Ogama County District Court, um their administrator left. There are things that need to coincide better and be better organized in the Ogama County District Court. And um our district court administrator is phenomenal, especially in the areas that need to be improved. Um this, of course, means that we'll be getting billing um we'll be getting money from Ogama for wages and fringes offset. Um additionally, we have two employees in district court who are going to take on some part of responsibilities um in regard in regards to oversight and magistrate duty. So they will get a temporary wage increase, and that will also be a bill to Ogama for repayment. I am waiting to talk to their administrator to finalize that and to allocate signs for that. My last piece of information is um of all of this, probably the one that makes my heart flutter. Um so we received on Friday a our twenty twenty-four health insurance premium increase amount for Priority Health. It's bad, seventeen point nine percent. I do not have the finalized data, we just had a brief telephone meeting um with our third party administrator advantage benefits. The reason for this is our usage, so the best way that I can explain it is if you look at a hundred percent as a dollar. So then for every dollar we pay for a premium, if we're at a hundred percent, it's a break even for the insurance, the health insurance company. Our usage is a hundred and thirty three percent. Well, they're losing thirty three cents on every dollar, basically. Um and that is due to our extremely high usage rate. We have pretty potent health concerns for our users, um and so that is driving that number up. It would be approximately three hundred and forty-five thousand dollar increase just to the general fund budget for twenty-four. Are you okay back there? Okay. Just checking, um we have asked for a quote from Blue Cross Blue Shield last year, they declined. It sounds like this year they will provide us a quote. No idea what that plan would look like, and Noel and I have also asked for additional plan actions from Priority Health. Um we will also be getting that formal presentation that will include data on Commissioner Ostrigan's request um for looking at cash and lieu offerings. But once we have all of this information compiled into a presentation, Noel and I will bring this to the board so that you can all and make some educated, make some educated decisions. I have not not heard from any of my department heads that they have any additional ideas, but if they do, I'm sure they'll let me know. That's it.
Have some questions?
Yes.
The uh on the spongy moth, on the spongy moth situation, I just wanted to make sure that we're all, I know we're going to talk about it again in a couple of weeks, but that we're all on track uh for what we're going to be, what you're going to be getting are some of the old numbers on what used to be done for the millage because this is one of the big problems that my constituents are asking me about all the time. Uh and if we don't have enough in in the millage to pay for the spongy moth program for certain areas, they're pretty upset. They're wondering why some people in one area get it and other people in another area. So I think that this is something that if they understand that the money is, we're going to have more money if the millage goes up, that's one part of the millage I think we could get past uh without too much. Most of the people out there feel, but I but I know, so that that's what I was wondering, is that the kind of information that we're going to get on what it uses?
We'll have a full discussion in two weeks.
So so what we are compiling and have compiled so far is um data as far as total spray, um total mileage collected, um we've looked at the total mileage allowable to be collected plus.
What is, I'm sorry, what is that? Total mileage, mileage allowable to be collected? What do you mean?
Well, so just as a, for for example, if um the board of commissioners, when you get the health four zero two nine presented to you, um there is a voter approved mileage, but the Board of Commissioners has the duty and the authority to those millages, fund balances, and make a determination if you're going to collect that in full or reduce the amount that you push over to the taxpayers. So for instance, if you had a fund balance in Gypsy Month of, say, two point one million dollars, you might not collect a full quarter of a mil because you've got a lot of money in the fund balance and people are complaining. That hasn't happened since I've been here, it happened to prior.
Right now, we have no money in it, from what I understand.
Right.
Okay, so are we going to ask, that's what I'm asking, are we going to ask for?
Well, that'll be in our discussion.
Yeah.
I understand, you know, I just kind of want to, you know, we're talking about it now too, so I I don't see, I mean, we got a lot of time.
Me personally, I think that, yes, going back to point two five would be would be great. What I will tell you is we looked years ago at if you sprayed just just county personal property, not including state land, you'd be looking at about five spray the entirety of.
Right now, we're point two five.
No, right now, we're at point one five, I believe, about that.
So we're about, we're, yeah, we're we're not even a a third of the way there almost.
Yeah, and so you'd be, you you're very particular, and that's one of the reasons that Julie will come back and I kind of explain. Um and when Daniel's doing some really cool graphs for us as well. And you can see the trending that, you know, you have a peak year, then you have a couple of low years.
Right.
You're in a low.
Yeah, when we when we were at that meeting, it was very well explained and very, very.
And he's even, they've even got it based on, he's breaking it down allocated by township, like spray blocks per township every year money for. We'll have all the information you guys need to make that decision and present that to the.
And that would be in in uh the form of having a vote.
It would have to be.
Increased mileage just for spongy moth.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely, yes, because we currently have a mileage right now, it would just be a uh a new mileage, it'll be a new mileage. Or whatever the mileage that the board determines would be right to.
I because I think, I don't think that's going to be that big of an issue to get past because it's a deep concern to everybody that I ever talked to.
I'd say.
Are you?
You know, you never know. Any other questions for?
I have one.
Yes.
Um the December fifteenth meeting for St. Helen.
It is at nine thirty A M.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Hey, let's move on to number eight correspondence. We have A through E, monthly department reports.
I I have some questions on that.
Yes.
Yeah, uh and it has to do with the, uh we've all been getting emails on the situation going on down at Holton Lake and everybody's concerned with the water levels there. I know that Darlene and Rex are working on it also. Oh, I think a lot. I think these things need to be responded to so people understand where our position is and what we can do and what they can do. For example, you know, I'll pat myself on the back, I know an awful lot about water level law. And I don't think the people know out there that we've hamstrung ourselves as a commission where we cannot go after a change. We've said that we're not going to go after a change in illegal water level, which is going to leave it up to somebody or some group on Holton Lake. We need to explain to them. Some group on Holton Lake is going to have to get two thirds of the uh uh lakefront owners, and we passed a resolution, not we, I didn't, I actually think it's an illegal resolution, but resolution back in March twenty-seventh of two thousand nineteen that we uh we could not do anything until two thirds of the property owners on uh Higgins, Holton, or or Lake St. Helen would have to come forward with petitions and a ten thousand dollar uh just a starting fee. So I I I think we need to have a uniform message to our constituents out there about what it's going to take and what they have to do. Because we're going to continue to get complaints on Holton Lake. Right now, Holton Lake is at its legal level and people are screaming.
Right, and I would like to add, there's a new forum and there's quite a few people on there, like eight hundred. And Jody, she really nailed it right on the head on the steps you have to take to move the lake level up. And I've been using that when I discuss that with different people, and it's really good.
Is 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 there a way we can, you know, get that message out there to people?
And we've been getting it out there in the last couple of weeks.
Okay, in what way? I haven't seen it.
Uh on different forums, on Facebook and stuff. And Darlene's talked to several groups too.
Could we post the procedure on her website?
Yeah, you can do that too.
There we go, there we go. That that's, I guess, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah.
Yeah, on our website, on Facebook and everything else, that's fine, but that's really not.
Right.
Us officially or.
Yeah, it's a very large group out there at Holton Lake water levels.
Yeah, so that actually wasn't me that posted it, just also it was an individual email that I have received from a gentleman um who contacted me or to.
It was very nice.
And he actually copied and pasted all of my email and put it on Facebook for.
Okay, I see your name on there. It was very nice.
On Facebook either, so.
No, I know, yeah. I just wanted to clarify, I didn't go on Facebook and.
But it's something we could, somebody sends us an email, we could point them to that on our on our website.
Correct.
I I don't know how much, Jody, hopefully that wouldn't take a lot of work, I I'm not sure. Okay.
Anything else? Monthly department reports, uh we have A through C, Ross County County Animal Shelter, Northeastern Michigan, Collagulous Homeless Against Homeless, that's in there, Region Three Housing. Number ten, Visitors, is there any visitors that like to be recognized? Okay, unfinished new business, A is lake level control structures, managers, job position, pay rate.
Um, yeah, we, the job for that is.
Yeah, we, the job for that has been posted. Posting ends, I believe, Friday. We're in the process of setting up interviews. Probably be around August third. And that's where we're at on that.
Okay. He is scheduling commissioners tour around the lakes. I would like to wait a couple of months when we get closer.
Pass that already. We, we, we were talking about the lake level.
Okay.
I just wondered, I just had a few more questions on it.
Sure.
In a nutshell, I guess Rex and Darlene, what does this mean?
In a nutshell, hopefully within four weeks, we have somebody in place for Holton Lake.
Okay. What is the, what is the pace schedule going to be for?
It's based on what wage and salary came back with.
So the wage and salary committee for the wage and compensation policy goes through when they do all the ratings and the ratings based on job criteria, which is set up through human resource management to salaries wages. And the committee on the end of themselves, which is made up of employees and headed by wealth. But they all equitably set it at a grade of five, which is a minimum starting range of twenty ninety-nine per hour to a maximum of twenty fifteen per hour. Or twenty eighteen, sorry.
And how do they determine how many hours this, this, this job is going to take?
So what Rex and Darlene did was I had been tracking my hours that I've been spending on all the different special assessment projects separate from like literally keeping on a sales spreadsheet in a notepad for the last three months. And so we did an average of that plus added on additional hours. Because obviously when projects come, you're going to be a little bit busier during that time period as well. So that's, that's how they came up with the number they were looking for.
That's a per, that's a per hour. But how many, so how many hours are you looking at then?
Approximately fifteen hours a week.
Only fifteen hours a week? Okay. And are we going to?
First pay scale goes.
I know that we had originally talked quite a while ago about the budgeting for this and what, with the special assessment districts covering a portion of this or all of it. I don't know.
Well.
Because we're, because as a county, we're allocated ten thousand dollars per level control structure pay towards management of our lake levels. How does that?
No. So we do not have ten thousand dollars per lake that is allocated.
I know, I know we don't, but by law we can, is what I'm saying. In other words, the whole county, yeah, the concept.
We needed to.
Well, let me get back to the, as we started out, because I don't want this ball to get dropped, is we had started originally out. We, we had all talked about ten thousand dollars per lake level control structure per year being allocated towards the pay for a delegated authority. Because the whole county benefits from our lakes. And just the people in the special assessment district shouldn't be the only ones paying salary of a delegated authority. And I hope we're still on that same wavelength. In other words, a lot is going to be paid by the special, the, the property owners in the special assessment district, but some should be paid by the county because the whole county benefits from the lakes. Am I, am I saying anything? I mean, do you remember we all talking about that?
And you, you are correct, but one of the things, the way it makes it sound is that there's ten thousand for Higgins, there's ten thousand for Lake St. Helen, and there's ten thousand for Holton. Of that ten thousand, the county already pays about fifty-five hundred for Lake to partner with the USGS. So that leaves you roughly forty-five hundred a year to do anything with. So that's where it comes in.
This is the first time I've heard of the USGS situation.
And we pay a contract with the USGS in the lake, have forever.
Oh, okay. To, to the monitoring equipment, the monitoring and everything. So, so is that, is that remaining amount? Are we going to contribute that towards the salary or whatever of, for the, so that leaves about another fifteen grand, we'll just say fifteen grand towards the salary of the delegated authority, the new delegated authority we're going to hire. And then the remainder, whatever the remainder amount would be paid out of the each special assessment district. Is that, I mean, I just want to make sure we're all on the same wavelength as we talked about it before. And I just want to, you know.
We still have to come up with everything, Eric. I can't, I can't commit to anything right now until I sit down and go through everything once again.
Well, I'm not asking you to commit to it, Dave. I'm talking to the whole board.
Right. For the whole board, you know, we need to see, sit down, get them figures.
Millage.
When our millage is in the next election and stuff like that, when we want to try to pass a bill and stuff, we have more money coming from the federal fund. Have to take a look at all of that stuff.
We can't just make a commitment right now.
Make a total commitment to that if there's not funds available.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Commissioner Ostrigan is correct. The ten thousand dollars has been talked about, but it's always been just a one-way conversation from one commissioner. The other commissioners have never stated such a thing.
What is your position on it, Rex? I thought that.
The board had never agreed that we had ten thousand dollars per lake to spend.
I didn't say we'd agreed to it. I just said we'd been talking about that and then.
Yeah, the talk has always been just from one commissioner. I mean, the others have really not participated in that conversation. And so the conversation needs to be.
I think we have that conversation.
When I hear the word same wavelength, we, by not responding, you expect us to tacitly acknowledge that we were, that we're agreeing with you. I, I need to review the facts. I don't want to leave as individuals or board members feeling that we've agreed with anybody in particular. I need to get the facts in front of me, but I'm not on the same wavelength yet because I'm not sure what the wavelength is. Just wanted that to be a.
Yeah.
I didn't want it to be forgotten.
It's not forgotten.
Okay. And, and based on the hours, I just want to make sure, based on the hours, what if it ends up being that a lot more hours have to be allocated towards it?
They're going to.
You work fifteen hours a week and that's it? And what if you ask, we're twenty-five hours a weekend?
The committee's going to come back to the board. That's how come we have a committee.
Okay, okay.
They're going to inform us. You know, fifteen might be too many. They might come back and say twelve a week. We don't know.
Okay.
So I know.
Just want to make sure.
Yeah.
No, no. And I know that Commissioner Senter and Commissioner Wilson talked to me about the legalities of taking a position that is not exempt and putting it into a salary format based on X number of hours, because ideally you're going to look at something and you're going to say, okay, yes, during, during the summer months, the amount of calls that you're going to receive just dealing with the public are going to be tremendous. You know, I, I spent half of the time that I track is in responding to emails or phone calls. The actual work of working on biweekly meetings and responding or getting information for our attorney, for our team, our special assessment team, is really the least amount of time that you do for something like that, because that's the whole point of having experts. You review what they have done. If you don't like it, you tell them so, et cetera. And then you just, you're monitoring instead of hands-on. Plus, we're looking at winter months. There really is minimal to do with those lake level control structures.
It's like Holton Lake, once you open it, nothing happens.
Their idea was that you look at it, if you're basing it off of X amount of hours, that you'd offer it as a set biweekly salary. So the person still needs to account like by doing something similar, like the Sheriff's Department uses a daily reporting system. They do, they call them dealies, where they, you know, this is what they've done for the day. So that you can account for that. And then that way, at the end of the year, if you're looking at it and the person's like, hey, look, I have been putting in many more than an average of twelve hours. Like if you get to the end of the year and they're saying they're working eleven hundred hours or to eleven hundred hours, A, you should compensate them for that because they're an hourly employee. And then B, the budget for the special assessment districts or wherever would need to be adjusted for that for the following year.
Do you have to compensate for that in arrears and pay that back or just going forward?
Would, you would compensate. So for instance, if I got to the end of the year of the tracking and I was an hourly salaried employee and my tracking method proved that I had well exceeded the amount of hours allocated to me, you would put that, you would pay them in arrears for that because they are an hourly employee, therefore they are diserved.
Okay. Yeah, I just want to make sure everything was out on the open and we're all talking about it. And this is something that, you know, is under consideration. I didn't say we don't agree to it. I'm just saying it's on the table.
And some of this is negotiable. Should we hire someone? Is to be talked about yet?
Thank you, Rex. Anything else? Thank you. Okay.
Yeah, I want to, have we been, started taking applications for this yet?
It's in-house right now.
Is anybody applying for it yet? Okay. How many people do we have? Okay, cool.
Okay. Are we set on that? B, to drive around, look at all the control structures. Mark and I talked, we're probably looking sometime in September, was it? And as we get closer, I'll let everyone know a few weeks before, so you could plan. I'll have the mini bus here. Yes, right after the meeting.
Our goal is to do it pretty much after the meeting, like we'd meet at like twelve or one o'clock. We usually spend about half an hour at each structure, half an hour lead time. So we start at like one, maybe.
Well, the bus will leave here like eleven thirty.
Then one, you know, but a half an hour at each one, so like maybe eleven thirty, one would be a one and one. Gives the public an opportunity to, to visit with us, is us to physically visit the structure. And it's, it's a, it's a meeting, so we're all, it's, it's open meeting act. You have to make sure we follow open, open meets act.
And the clerk's with us taking notes and everything.
So it's, it's a regular, it's a regular meeting, just a visitation.
The only thing I would suggest is maybe because stuff like that, I had District Health second.
Oh, I'll get with everyone. Yeah. Yeah, I'm just not going to say this the day.
We should be done for that, Tornan, I hope.
And Rex would like to bring something up.
Yeah. We're continuing on new business, whole business. Actually, I have three things. First, I think you had to step out. Chase is running into some problems with soil erosion and I encountered them problems when I was doing it. And the answer I came up with, and I started the process and Jody started looking at it and Chase is coming up with the same answer now is we need to change soil erosion from a resolution to an ordinance. That gives more strength to the the, the program to be able to deal with people who basically are violating the laws. Guess puts more bite into it. It allows for fines to be levied. And also, you know, that'll take probably two, three months to accomplish that. In the meantime, we probably need to revisit our permit fee schedule and also include on their doubling permit fees. If you do a project and you don't have a permit to start with. Chase, you need to say something. Chase would like to come up and talk on that before I move on to my other tool.
Make sure the green light's on, Chase, and introduce yourself, please.
Chase Chupdi, Soil Erosion Officer. I would prefer to double permit fees if people don't pull permits than to kind of penalize the companies Ross County County that are good at pulling. There's enough that, like me and don't pull permits, that probably bring more income into. That would be, that would be my thing for raising because we just did a large rage, raise last year and hate the. But I'd rather have a penalty that are following the rules.
Okay.
That's what you spend most of your time on too, isn't it?
That's what I spend all my time on. I mean, that's.
I think we're going to incorporate that in mid-year even, can't we?
No. Yes, you can, because the way that, the way that it was set up under your precedent predecessor separated the resolution and the fee schedule specifically for that purpose. Ideally with soil erosion and then Justin on the phone, he said, you want to fund your soil erosion program should be funded through your fees. That is his recommendation, especially for rural northern Michigan counties. So he mentioned this too about the, the fees doubling. So that can actually be brought to you when approved at any time and then republished.
I talked to him this morning.
Did you?
Yeah, I said, three contractors already today. So I talked to him this morning about it. He said, said it's very common to have counties have to double penalty. That's a good thing. Essentially, you choose not to pull a permit and I don't catch you, then you get away with it. Or if I catch you, you just pay the fee and do the permit.
I think we need to bring that back to the board in two weeks for approval.
Well, I have something written up so we can do it.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Chase.
Thank you.
Um, one other thing I had, actually two other things yet. About a week ago, I got permission from the chairperson to talk to Spicers Group about the report we've gotten since we all seemed a little taken aback by it. Um, in my discussion with Luke, it's my opinion, Spicers did nothing wrong in that report. They did what they thought they were supposed to do. If there was a ball dropped, it was by the county of Ross Common. It was part of the plain wrongs to the board for not keeping track of what's going on. And so Spicers report, we got what we paid for.
So I will add that in the email and phone correspondence with Luke, Olfie Brooks, and the scouring were specifically mentioned by myself. Additionally, the gentleman that I mentioned from our maintenance department that I sent out specifically was instructed and did ask about both of those things and was told that there wasn't anything there.
By who?
By the inspector on site from Spicers.
When, I, I, I've got a question. I'm absolutely mystified by that because back in two thousand and ten, thirteen years ago, they reported scouring. It's gotten worse since. And Chase Shemke even testified before our committee here a few months ago that it's increased since then. There's double the flow rate leaving Higgins and we have done nothing at all to do that. And whose responsibility is that? Whose responsibility is that, Mr. Chair? I, it's our delegated authorities responsibility to, to keep the levels maintained where they're supposed to be maintained to the legal level. And nothing has been addressed. I'm sorry, Jody, nothing has been addressed to Higgins Lake.
So as the delegated authority, I guess I'm going to say that that's untrue. I have brought three different ideas to this Board of Commissioner since January one that this board has not taken any action on. As a matter of fact, the first one, which would have been to do a pre-assessment to the special assessment district specifically to implement the Spicers Group's recommendation regarding the notch for sixty-four thousand dollars was removed because you did not want to pass that cost on. Completely understandable. So additionally, I have suggested to this Board of Commissioners that you reach out to the prosecuting attorney's office and discuss with them the ability of changing language that would allow for us to retain a few additional inches of water at the beginning of the summer, in early, late spring, to allow us to have a higher level as we head in so that as we have the type of year we have now, that we're a little bit higher. Thirdly, there are several recommendations in the current Spicers study that have come out that we will be implementing. The first easy part, the tree is already gone. The second additional portions would be getting cost estimates on some of these smaller fixes that were recommended in there as well. Additionally, I did talk to Luke and Luke suggested that we would need to measure the scouring because there are no records that indicate from the two thousand and ten what that level was. So how do you, as a civil engineer, which is required under statute, have a civil engineer do it? How do you prove how much scouring happened if you don't have a base mark? So I have brought three. So I have brought three different ideas to this one as a delegated authority.
Yeah, was that, okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Was that addressed in the last report? That he gave us?
Of the, the scouring? No, he did not because he said there wasn't any there. That is what he informed the maintenance director. There is an addendum that I have asked for, but I have not received it yet.
When Rex went there and took a look at it, Rex even said that there was scouring. Spicer said there was scouring and now all of a sudden they say there's no scouring.
I do believe that Rex was out there with somebody that was a representative eagle and the representative eagle said, I don't see any scouring.
I don't trust them any further than I can draw. You got, you got, Rex said there was scouring. Uh, Chase said there was scouring. I saw scouring. There is scouring and they say there's no scouring. It's like.
Yeah, and I was told there was no scouring too.
Third-party engineer that has nothing to do with spicers to go out and specifically address the issue of scouring.
I would like that.
I'd like to comment on this.
Yes.
In my conversation with Luke, we talked about, you know, originally the board members. Kind of thought this is what we thought. We were gonna have someone go look at it and draw. Information and a plan that we could put on a permit to replace stones in the stream bed. And in discussion with Luke, you know, we talked about there is no elevations on the original permit.
Mm-hmm.
Just plain as no elevations given. And we discussed it and I said, well, the only way we can come up with anything is to measure the bed in the surrounding area. And determine if the stream bed is lower than that.
Well, one of the main issues also, Rex, is that there's no apron as recommended by Spicer back in twenty-ten. There's no apron on the bottom of that, on the spillway and that, and that, that.
Well, that may, you know, impede scouring if it was in place.
Right, it would help a lot.
But the, to get a permit to redo that stream bed. We need some information to say, look, this is, this is what the elevations are.
How do we do that then? How do we, how do we do that then, Rex?
You'd have to have an engineer go out and do some engineering and measure that.
I'd like to move forward with Jody's.
So I will need to bring that, um, I will need to bring that quote forward to you guys.
Yep.
For all three lake levels, the budget has already been exceeded for the year. So at this point, um, anything that comes over will need to be approved by you individually.
Sounds good. Thank you, Jody.
One more thing on new business, old business, and Jody alluded to this already. Um, I'm looking for permission from the chair for the lake level management committee to meet with the prosecutor. And discuss interpretations of lake levels in the court.
You can.
Can do that?
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Anything else? Motion's and resolutions.
Move to adopt resolution number twenty-two-three-zero-seven-zero-one. To levy the following ad valorem tax rates for the county of Roscommon for the year twenty-twenty-three on the winter tax roll. E nine-one-one-one point zero-zero-zero-zero. Road patrol one-point-five-zero-zero-zero, senior services zero-point-nine-eight-two-two. Gypsy moth zero-point-one-two-two-eight, animal shelters zero-point-two-four-five-four and zero-point-one-four-seven-four. Veterans zero-point-one-six-four-zero and roads zero-point-four-nine-one-zero.
So move, Mr. Chair.
I'll second that. Discussion. Clear call roll, please.
Milburn?
Yes.
Censor?
Yes.
Russo?
Yes.
Astor Green?
Yes.
Wolfson?
Yes.
Number two.
Move to adopt resolution number twenty-two-three-zero-seven-point-zero-two. Authorizing David Russo, chairman and Michelle M. Stevenson, county clerk. To sign the L forty-two-nine, including winter, with the following tax rates for the county of Roscommon for the year twenty-twenty-three. Summer general fund three-point-five-one-nine-four, E nine-one-one-one-point-zero-zero-zero-zero. Road patrol one-point-five-zero-zero-zero, senior services zero-point-nine-eight. Two-two gypsy moth zero-point-one-two-two-eight, animal shelter zero-point-two-four-five-four and zero-point-one-four-seven-four. Veterans zero-point-one-six-four-zero and roads zero-point-four-nine-one-four.
I'll second that. Any discussion? Clear call roll, please.
Censor?
Yes.
Russo?
Yes.
Astor Green?
Yes.
Wolfson?
Yes.
Milburn?
Yes.
Adopted.
Number three, please.
Move to approve the Roscommon County Local Emergency Planning Committee, LEPC, bylaws as attached.
So move, Mr. Chair.
Discussion.
I'd just like to thank Vanessa for the work and.
Yeah, that was a lot of her work. Thank you.
You don't really realize how important it is to you having emergency and that comes the most important thing. So. Thank you for your effort and your time and your, and your knowledge to put this together.
Please call roll.
Russo?
Yes.
Wolfson?
Yes.
Censor?
Yes.
Astor Green?
Yes.
Milburn?
Yes.
Which carried.
Motion number four, please.
Move to adopt resolution number twenty-two-three-point-zero-seven-point-zero-three, Roscommon County Hazardous Mitigation Plan adoption. Whereas Roscommon County Emergency Management has gathered information and prepared the Roscommon County Hazardous Mitigation Plan. And whereas the County Hazardous Mitigation Plan has been prepared in accordance with the Disaster Mitigation Act of two thousand. And whereas Roscommon County has reviewed the plan and affirms that the plan will be updated no less than every five years. Now therefore be it resolved that the Roscommon County Board of Commissioners adopts the Roscommon County Hazardous Mitigation Plan. As this jurisdiction's hazard mitigation plan and resolves to execute the actions in the plan.
So move.
Second.
That second.
Any discussion?
Milburn, second one.
Clear call roll, please.
Astor Green?
Yes.
Milburn?
Yes.
Russo?
Yes.
Wolfson?
Yes.
Censor?
Yes.
Carried, adopted. Sorry.
Number five.
Move to appoint Ray Lizinski. To the Economic Development Committee for a three-year term effective July twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-three through July twenty-six, two thousand twenty-six.
So move. Discussion. Clear call roll, please.
Wolfson?
Yes.
Milburn?
Yes.
Russo?
Yes.
Astor Green?
Yes.
Censor?
Yes.
Carried.
Okay, before she reads motion number six, this part where it says twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four and twenty-five. We all have that information. She's not gonna read the numbers.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All I would ask, Mr. Chair, is that we just give the total expenditures?
Yeah.
Thank you, sir. That's the big thing.
Yeah.
Then acknowledge it. It's on the website.
Yep.
Thanks, Heather.
Thank you. Move to adopt the resolution number twenty-two-three-point-zero-seven-point-zero-four. Childcare Fund Deficit Elimination Plan Resolution as required by the Michigan Department of Treasury. Whereas Roscommon County's Child Care Fund has a deficit of eighteen-thousand-seven-hundred-ninety-three and seventy dollars and seventy-nine cents. Effective December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two. And whereas nineteen-seventy-one P A one-forty. Requires that a deficit elimination plan be formulated by the local unit of government and filed with the Michigan Department of Treasury. Therefore, be it resolved that the Roscommon County Board of Commissioners adopts the Below Child Care Fund Deficit Elimination Plan. The total expenditures of two thousand twenty-two. Being one million ninety-eight thousand four hundred ninety-three and forty-two. Twenty-twenty-three, one million three hundred seventy-five thousand four hundred ninety-three and fifty-eight. Twenty-twenty-four, one million four hundred sixteen thousand seven hundred fifty-eight and thirty-nine. Twenty-twenty-five, being one million four hundred eighty-four thousand five hundred eighty-four and sixty-four.
So move, Mr. Chair.
Second, and thank you. Any discussion? Clear, please call roll.
Milburn?
Yes.
Astor Green?
Yes.
Wolfson?
Yes.
Sir?
Yes.
Thank you. Committee reports. Rex.
Um, we pretty much covered lake level committee report. I think August third is when we're trying to schedule for our interviews at nine o'clock in the morning. Um, also the hazardous waste committee. And we met two weeks ago and when we had the hazardous waste program. We served sixteen hundred people. Twelve thousand four hundred pounds of hazardous toxic waste was taken in. And it cost the committee nineteen thousand dollars to dispose of that. And that was just one part of it, along with tires and everything else they took in. But it is just, yeah, twelve thousand four hundred pounds of toxic.
My hazardous waste, is that like paint and stuff like that?
Paint, chemicals, pesticides.
Stuff people bring in.
A lot of aerosols, oven cleaner. You know, that's, that's a lot of pony. Just, just so you know, I mean, and they had to pay nineteen thousand to get rid of them.
Now, do people pay to get that stuff off?
Some people donate.
It's a donation.
Um, tires are, you know, I'm going to tire for the first three or first three are free and then just so much. Um, but the, the, the charge is less than it costs us to dispose of them.
Ethan else?
That's it.
Uh, last week I went down to review a contract in Mount Pleasant for district health. And, uh, this week I went down to the mound for a banquet dinner in my own accord. Chairman and I had an agenda meeting and Darlene and I did district health.
Sweet. Darlene?
Um. Like above all committee and off meeting last month.
I had an agenda and nine-one-one authority board meeting. Uh, I'm gonna put the sheriff out in the spot. You wanna talk about the national night out? Thank you, sir. Yep. I probably should have asked you this earlier.
So the first Tuesday in August is a national program called National Night Out. We've been participating in this program, I believe, since two thousand and nine, two thousand and ten, somewhere in there. And we move this event around throughout the community or the different communities every year. Last year we were at St. Helen. This year we're back in Holton Lake, uh, in the Walmart parking lot and it'll be from six to eight P M. And what it's designed for is for all of the first responders of different civic organizations. To get together and invite the community to come. See public safety in a different light and find out all the different resources that are available in the, in the county. Um, so I encourage commissioners to stop on out there. Free food, there's games for the kids, there's prizes for the kids. Um, and all in all, it's just a good time for the community to get together and find out. A, what their taxes are going towards and B, to see public safety in a different light, because a lot of times the only time they see us. Excuse me, see us during tragedy.
Yeah, it's totally awesome. Good time. Check it out. Thank you, Sheriff. Public comment. Chase.
Chase Shupke, come to you as a citizen. Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, I do not agree with what you guys are saying about the dams. Okay, first of all. That Spicer report, when they gave the flow through there, it was not gauged, was calculated. That means a width which has not changed by a height. Which has changed. So you're telling me they can't go back and look how they calculated that and tell you from the. And then I, I believe also that they, they relate it to lake, legal lake level. But you're telling me you can't calculate the distance down how where it used to be? That is cheap and easy. You don't even have to hire a third party. It tells you where it was when they did the report. If it was gauged, you couldn't do that, but they calculate it off the weir equation, which is a general equation everyone uses. And it would solve everything. That's my.
So what, so what you're saying, what you're saying, there is scouring there.
Well, Pete, you can't really, it's just like anybody else coming up here. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Any other comment?
Just real quick, since two thousand and eight, I've been sitting in these commissioner meetings and the same. Discussions have been happening about the dams, control structures, whatever you wanna call them at this point here. So do I believe that something needs to be done about it? This is, I've been beating this horse for many years. Delegated authority, maybe that's the answer. I don't know. That's not my, it's not my bailiwick. Okay, uh, do I agree that that should be forced on or put on the county controllers back to handle? No. I wanna caution you as, as commissioners, you're gonna decide on this delegated authority and position. From what was said earlier, twenty dollars an hour, thirty thousand dollars a year. For twenty hours of work a week. And you have employees that work in the county building. They've worked here for years. And are making less money than that, working twice the amount of hours. Now, I understand they get benefit package. Okay, and that's an expensive, that's an expensive thing, but how do you go back to your employees that work here? And explain to them that someone that's working half the time. Is getting paid the same amount a month. Wanna caution you on that.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Yep, public comment, Bill.
Uh, Bill Sullivan. Um, I just. I'm a data-driven person. And I hear all this discussion about, I wish I would have started copying. And timing people when we've talked about this lake level discussion. I got the same, I've only been here eighteen months that the sheriff does. I just wanna bring you to your attention that since I started the work order system last year. Amount of time, facilities, buildings and grounds have spent on the lake level control structures. Last year, we spent eighty-three-point-five hours. Raising, lowering, cutting grass, moving trash, et cetera. That did not include any of the. Engineering and other items that I didn't know went into the lake level control structures budget until I was here long enough to, I started gathering all this. Since I went to the new computerized work order system, wanted everyone to understand. Just from a facility standpoint, and we're down one employee from where we were last year. We've already spent five thousand three hundred seven dollars in our internal labor. A hundred and forty-seven-point-seven-five hours on these lake level control structures and it's only July. We have put out twenty-two thousand one hundred and seventy-seven dollars. For the Spicer Group, for the, uh. Tiffany, et cetera. So when you are looking at, we've got thirty thousand dollars for these lakes and stuff, none of this is taken into consideration. Because you didn't have the data before. So when people say, you know. The, the whole community benefits for this. That's right, and I'm not complaining. I've got good staff and we're gonna work our tails off to maintain what we can. But every time there's a challenge, a complaint, anytime where I'm looking at the lake levels every morning. Anytime that there's a change that needs to be done, we discuss it and, and we take care of it. I just want you to understand, though, this is taken away from other functions we should be doing.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Number fifteen, adjournment.
Remove this chair.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.